Which means on a viewer. Which means that if you are talking at your side tables, the people on Zoom will be able to hear you. So it's really important that at least during the program, we are completely quiet. And then after the meeting, we can all get together and chummy and catch up post-meeting, but just so that we can hear you. So we are testing a new hybrid model, whoops, for this meeting. And, oh, thank you. Which is certainly a work in progress. Not only is this a new venue for us, but we're also using their incredible technology to engage the folks that are on Zoom. So I think Derek just moved it, but we have about 20 people on Zoom this morning in addition to the group of about 55 people here today. So a total of 75 people engaged in the conversation that we're really excited about. Yay. So I know what you're thinking. We waited such a long time for this day. Space Jam 2 comes out. Well, I'm actually really excited about that. But, um, terms aside, I'm also incredibly excited to be with you. Our first in-person downtown council meeting in 16 months. So we're thrilled at kind of the changes that we've made, the progress we've made, the transitions we've made over the past 16 months. So I just want to give an incredibly huge thank you to the Downtown Council Board for sticking with us, being creative, and really rolling with the punches to create, you know, this momentum that we're seeing as far as the council is concerned. So, thank you Downtown Council. We already said thank you to ByStar, but I want to say thank you to ByStar again. I also want to thank Brett and Board and Laura for the incredible breakfast this morning. Thank you Brett and Board. And I also want to thank Martin Coffee for the delicious coffee. We've missed you. Thank you. If you are a Downtown Council Board member, can you please stand to be recognized? Okay. So I already mentioned about the room and how I can hear everything. Please keep that in mind. Remarks to the folks on Zoom. Welcome. We are so excited to have you. We have Downtown Council Board Member Ben Alcorn, as well as Brian Tuttle, monitoring the chat. As I mentioned, this is a work in progress. So for those of you on Zoom, we know you can't be with us here today, but let us know how this hybrid livestream is going. And we're going to do our best to continue to refine it over the course of the next months, but we're just really excited to have you. So thank you for joining us. In addition, we will be doing questions at the end of the presentation. So for those of you on Zoom, put them in the chat box and we'll be monitoring them and we'll ask those questions to the group later in the program. And then I want to remind everyone, we are recording, so even if you're here, we're recording, hence the green dots above you. And now I'm going to give a brief overview of Downtown Council for those of you that are new or returning or haven't been to an in-person in a while. We are one of eight chamber councils and simply put, the Downtown Council cares about the future of our city. We represent Jacksonville's business community, including major corporations, growing businesses, and startups. And our goal is to connect one another so that Greater Jacksonville and downtown will thrive and prosper. In a city with seven bridges, we are the eighth bridge. Our meetings offer a brave space to discuss local topics, and we look forward to different perspectives on what makes our city great and ways to make it better. We also pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top-tier speakers to our meetings. And this morning is no different. We are so excited to have David Cohen and Jim Webb with Manifest Distilling to talk about the new alcohol legislation and what that means for development, entertainment in Jacksonville. At this time, I'm now going to recognize all brand-new Downtown Council members. Some of them are here today. So Mallory Bourne with PRI Productions, Hannah Ferguson with Manifest Distilling, Cindy Kinnear with One Enterprise Center, Rochelle Miller with Hashtag Realty Group, and Larry Swing with Jackson Electric. Welcome. We're so excited to have you. And now I'm going to turn it over to our fearless Director of Programs Laura Edgcombe, Laura Phillips Edgcombe, to introduce today's speakers. Laura?
Thanks, Gracie. Good morning, everybody. Happy Friday. It's very scary to have everyone in the same room, and I only mean that because you're hidden behind a screen and I can kind of do my thing. So I'm just really excited to see everyone. It's been a very long road, and thank you for everyone for sticking around. Thank you for those who have joined us in person, and thank you to those on Zoom for staying with us and still participating. You know, when we talked about going back to a hybrid model, or just going back in person, a hybrid model for us made more sense because there's a lot of people who don't have access to us. They can't take two hours out on a Friday morning to come hang out. So it's really nice to know that we are able to provide this for the community, as well as for those that, you know, need to educate a community. As Gracie mentioned, it's really important for us to be able to give as much. For those that only read the headlines, like, we're trying to give the filler information, right? We want to bring in speakers who are actually talking about what's going on downtown, what's good for our community, what's good for our city, what's good for, you know, the overall good of us all, right? And it's so, it's so fitting that we are in ByStar because their motto is "do good", right? Like, that's their big thing. They want to do good, and we with the Downtown Council also want to do good. So I just want to thank everyone for being here. I want to say I'm sorry if we fudged this up the first couple of times because we're going to. You all watched us scrambling this morning. We literally had like a two-hour meeting, not even five days ago. We thought we had it down-packed. It's all right. We're all good. With that, I'm going to, just like Gracie had said, we are recording. Please don't forget. Similar to when you're on Zoom, chat's on the right-hand side of the screen. Please throw your questions up there when we get into Q and A. As Gracie mentioned, Ben will be moderating that. We'll make sure that your questions get out to the guys. With it, I'm going to go ahead and do the little bios that we do for our lovely speakers. And I'm going to read it because, for those of you that know me well, you know, I tend to ramble sometimes when I get excited. So I am really excited about this one. I have been friends with both Jim Webb and David Cohen for like half of my life. So it's really exciting to be able to have them here today for our first in-person, but I'm definitely going to read their bio because I don't want to add a whole bunch of random stuff. So let's go with that. So David Cohen is the President and Head Distiller of Manifest Distilling in Jacksonville, Florida, and he's responsible for the day-to-day operations in the distillery. Manifest opened in 2015, and its products are currently distributed in Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, Illinois, Washington DC, as well as nationwide through online retailers. David also serves as President of the Florida Craft Spirits Association, the first industry-supported nonprofit established to promote the craft spirits industry throughout the state, which is, he will talk to you during because it's very important in the legislation. With a long family history and hospitality, beginning in the early 1940s in the Caribbean, his involvement in the spirits industry wasn't a stretch. Clearly, his family, since 1940, is not him. Prior to founding Manifest, David completed, because I read that wrong, David completed an internship with Kentucky Artisan Distillers and earned a certificate from the Seibel Institute of Technology for Craft Distilling and Operation. And prior to that, he was responsible for opening and/or operating several companies, ranging from running a production company in Los Angeles to being the Creative Director and Vice President of an editorial and publishing company. David lives here currently with his wife Nina, who's one of my best friends. I adore her. And they have three children, Abe, Frankie, and Charlie. And when he has left over free time, which I don't ever know you have left over free time, he is running or biking through Jacksonville. Okay, moving on to Mr. Jim Webb. Jim Webb is the General Manager and a Partner at Manifest Distilling, downtown Jacksonville's only full-scale organic craft distillery. Sorry, I just love the way that sounds. Concurrently with his job at the distillery, he's the Beverage Director for Downtown Vision, responsible for all drink sales during the soon-to-be relaunched Art Walk, as well as movie nights, their annual gala, and any other special events, most notably the Jax River Dams Concert Series, which brought over 30,000 people downtown. Prior to Manifest, Jim was one of the founding members of the Friends of Heming Park, establishing events and other activations at the now-renamed James Walden Johnson Park, the front lawn of Jacksonville City Hall. He also currently serves on the Board of the Jacksonville Historical Naval Ship Association, endeavoring to bring a historic U.S. Navy warship museum to the north bank of downtown. An active trustee member of the Jacksonville Chamber of Commerce, he is our 2021 Small Business Leader of the Year. We're very proud of him. And he also serves on, and he also serves on the Board of Directors of the Downtown Council. In his spare time, which I absolutely know he does not have any of, he enjoys Manifest, fitting, as well as local craft beers and spirits in his home bar, plus out in numerous locally-owned establishments. He is a dog dad to his English Bulldog Dooley, which if anyone follows him on social media, you get to see. And he's a cat uncle to Manifest Distillery cat Jenny, first team to get more likes than he does on Instagram. With that, guys, I invite you to the stage. Please tell us all about.
Are we unmuted?
I don't know. I unmuted myself. Which chairs?
Take a chair.
Does it matter? All right. Are we good?
Should be good, yeah. Those are going currently.
Okay. Well, hopefully I did right. Yeah. Now, this is going to be very boring for the people who want to. Uh, well, hi. This is fun to see everybody and no masks, and that's just worth celebrating right there. So thanks to the chamber for having us back for the first event. That's exciting. And we have a lot of fun stuff to talk about with the recent legislation that passed. I'll give you guys, that was kind of the main reason that we were asked to come. So I'm going to give you kind of a brief primer on it, and then we'll dive in from there. So the craft spirits industry, the national level, is governed by the Tax and Trade Bureau, which is a Department of Treasury. So it's a taxation authority, excuse me, but they make all the rulemaking on a federal level. So that's where that's set. And then every state after that is responsible for creating their own legislation on how spirits are produced within the state, which is just a post-prohibition era. It was, it was after prohibition that federal government said, fine, no more prohibition, but all the states have to figure this out for themselves. Oh, and by the way, we're going to take a tax off the top, which is still the way it is today, but it's currently being challenged very much on a, on a large scale. But in Florida, Florida is really tied for the second-largest spirits market in the United States. It's New York, California, and Florida are the top three, and usually us in New York are kind of hand-in-hand. Spirits in Florida is responsible for over $7.5 billion of gross domestic product. So it's a, it's a massive revenue generator, and it creates over 82,000 jobs. So the spirits industry is incredibly important. So I'm mentioning that to you today because I think it underscores how challenging it is to change anything when you have so many dollars at play and you have so many hands in that pot. For us to come in and say, we're a craft distillery, which represents an infinitesimal fraction of those numbers I just gave you, and we want to change it because it'll help our business, when what we're fighting against is the large spirit players in the industry who are protecting kind of what's theirs, which is a forced brokerage, which is a different talk. So that was kind of what we were up against. The law that passed this past July was a Senate Bill. This July, right. It's past July. That we just had, and we're still living it. It's, uh, right, right. That's right. I think we hear this again. Yeah. So Senate Bill 46, and it's really been eight years in the making to get to where we are today. And what that bill has allowed for all state distillers to do is, a couple of big things are, it removes a bottle limit. If any of you have been to Manifest, you know that we could, we could only sell you six, six bottles of any spirit per year. And we had to moderate that, or we had to figure out how to record that and track it. And that was, that was, that was chipped away over the past five years, from no bottles to one bottle, to two, now it's six. The other big thing, if any of you have been there, you have faced the terribly awkward conversation of, I'd like a gin tonic. Well, we can't give you that, but here's a $5 mixer, and I'll give you a free sample. We've lived that little piece of hell for the past five years, and now, thank God, that's over. So that's probably the biggest piece, is that we can now serve cocktails. So you can come see us, you can order a legitimate drink, and we can make you a proper drink. There's a lot of other little things. Another big one that will have an impact on downtown is it affords the distilleries to be able to sell at farmers' markets and fairs. So we can go to, we have a Synarch Market now, and we can sell our bottles and potentially even sell drinks, depending what happens. And I say depending because we're now in this rulemaking part of everything where the bill was passed, it became law, but now how ABT, which is what DBPR governs state level, is they're going to inherit, they're going to inherit that and go, okay, what's this mean? What's the enforcement side of it? What's the rulemaking? We don't know how that's going to end up yet, so we kind of have to wait and see.
Right. There's a companion bill to this one, which is to-go for restaurants, where in the past, if you had a restaurant, you could serve on-premise, but you couldn't sell stuff to-go. And that added maybe a paragraph to a part of the legislation, and then the rules are eight pages long, how they're interpreting that addition. So ours is an entire addition to.
It's like a six-page, like.
Seven-page bill. So you're expecting like a 50-page document, all right, this is what this means, you know? Like, may is should, you know? Like, you know, because like, for example, in the, um, the last paragraph says like in the DBPR, we'll license craft distilleries to be able to sell, sell product and do tastings at fairs, blah, blah, blah. But how much is that license going to cost, you know?
Right.
Like, we don't know how they're going to implement it yet, so we're just kind of in a holding pattern.
Well, and so much of what we do is, is regulated. It's a highly regulated industry, so all the things that that touches, you know, there's, you make one change here, it'll trickle down, and how many different things it's going to touch. Like, one of the things that I was talking to a distiller down at St. Pete, and they've, they've started to enjoy the liberties of this new law, and they've talked to people that have, that are putting on farmers' markets or festivals and said, hey, listen, here's, here's the law, and this is what we can do. And they're, they're not allowing it yet because they're, they're just, they're scared of it. What's the licensing of it? You know, can we sell alcohol out of public space? Like, there's so many, you know, from, from city ordinances, there's so many different, different things that this touches. So I imagine that it will be maybe months before we get really clear guidance. And in the meantime, it creates a little bit of an issue because it's the Wild West. You know, I've, we've got, as Laura mentioned with the Craft Spirits Association, I probably get a half dozen emails a week from people saying, hey, you know, do we have any guidance on this yet? Here's what I'm doing. And I'm like, that's, that's definitely not in the law. I mean, I, like, you know, no law did it say you could sell beer and wine. So I'm really, I highly advise against that. I'm not an attorney, but don't do that. And so we have this issue now where you've got people doing stuff like that that's, you know, taking advantage of it, and that's a, that's a bad look.
Yeah. If you go onto the, uh, if you, if you want to waste a lot of time, go to the DBPR website, look at stuff, and they have a thing on like informational listings where they'll list all guidances, and then they have, you can petition the Secretary of the DBPR to say, hey, this is how I'm interpreting this law. What is your interpretation? And you can look at these legal cases where, like, there's one guy 10 years ago, he wanted to have in one room his bar, which can serve alcohol up until 2:00 AM. And then in the other, other room, he wanted to have a bottle club, which is where you can bring your alcohol, and then the bartender will serve it for you. And he wanted then operate that from 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM, when then the bar would reopen. And the kicker was they all shared the same entrance, and to operate a bar or a distillery or a restaurant, you have to have dominion over the entire space. And they said, well, because you can't, you both share the entrance, neither of you have dominion over it, so you can't do this. But it's, it's legal to have a bottle club, and it's legal to have a bar, but this, they said, basically makes a 24-hour bar because you share the same entrance. And so they had to separate the two of them. And so it was just like, people are always trying to find a loophole, you know? Like our, by the mixer, you pour the shot into it.
Right. Well, as we said, there's a lot of money in the industry to be made, and so people, you catch wind of that, you think it's, it's like, oh, well, that's great. You just get a license, you sell, you sell beer and wine, whatever. People show up, you make a bunch of money. And as, as all of you, as educated business people know, that's absolutely not the truth. But it creates a lot of opportunity for, for people to come in and kind of spoil the fun. So, but the, you know, the industry is, as I mentioned earlier, what, what we were up against over the past eight years, our industry, at least in this state, is pretty much regulated by the Retailers Association, which is, which is ABC, and Southern Wine and Spirits. So they're, they're the largest national distributor, and they are headquartered, the, it's still, the three largest distributors in the United States are all privately-held, family-owned companies, which is scary. And, and the largest is, is based in Miami. So that's where the family lives. That's their, that's their domicile. So as being in that state, you can imagine they have incredibly powerful lobbyists that are looking at everything to make sure that nothing chips away at kind of what they've built over time. And so why it took eight years was just establishing relationships with those lobbyists, establishing trust, working together truly together to try to create something where they understood that this wasn't going to jeopardize what they were doing as a distributor. And frankly, as a distillery, we don't want to be a distributor. Like, I don't want to operate a fleet of trucks. We don't want to be doing deliveries, but in order for someone of our size to build a brand, we have to be able to interact with the consumer. It's really difficult to afford to interact with the consumer unless there's some kind of point-of-sale transaction. So what we were asking for is really, simply put, it was parity with breweries and wineries, who could already sell things by the glass. And so it just took a while. It took, it took really the better part of eight years to get here. But, but this year was, it, it, it's interesting when people in powerful places get involved with things because the bill sailed through unanimously. There was one no vote from a person who should not be named.
From Jacksonville.
From Jacksonville. I will let you look it up, and anybody involved in politics can imagine who this gentleman was. But obviously, that didn't stop it because other than that, it was completely unanimous, and it sailed right through. But we are, so what are our plans? Right? I know you guys are dying to ask that question. What are you going to do next? So what we're going to do next? So Jim and I have hired a really incredible bartender, a guy named Ben Golden. If anybody of you have been to the Posting House, he was previously there. Before that, he was at Bell, Leather, and Black Sheep. He's a great mixologist, and I don't use that term lightly because I think it's completely overused, but he's, he's, he's a really intelligent guy and from a flavor profile standpoint. So we've brought him on board. He's creating a whole menu, and we're going to do a relaunch in mid-August. Haven't announced the date yet. We'll do kind of a PR campaign around it, but there's going to be a little bit of a new identity. There's going to be some physical changes to our tasting room, and we'll operate more like a regular bar, have more regular food truck opportunities there. You can combo off, you know, proper glassware, proper ice. You can sit down, you can have a drink. And the really cool thing about this, not only for, you know, obviously for us and what it means for our business, is we make everything that is poured in these drinks. Part of the law is, you know, I can't sell a shot of Fireball. Why would I want to? But I can't sell a shot of Fireball. I can only make things that are made on-premise. So if a drink has a vermouth in it, I have to make that vermouth. If it has bitters, I have to make those bitters, which is restrictive, but at the same time, I think it's an opportunity to be very creative. Yeah. And we, we've been really creative over the past five years. So we have this library of really obscure things like blueberry brandy that I was like, what am I going to do with 150 bottles of blueberry brandy? Well, now I know what I can do with it. So now, you know, you get to come in, you get to experience it, you get to learn how to mix with it, what it tastes like, and it's just, it brings a whole other level of education.
Like, a lot of times, people will come into the distillery and say, can I get a tequila? And like, well, no, we don't make a tequila. And they say, well, why don't you make a tequila? And I said, well, to be called tequila, it has to come from three states or something like that, in Mexico. But we can make an agave spirit now. And so we're looking at, all right, people are going to come in, and they're going to want a tequila cocktail, so let's make some Jacksonville agave spirit that will taste like tequila. And, you know, we might not be able to make enough to get an distribution, but we'll make enough to make a cocktail with it at the distillery, and then if people really love it, well, then we have like, you know, marketing information to see whether we could go wider with the product.
Yeah. Any questions so far?
And we don't have to make the mixers. It's all the alcohol.
Right.
Are there any local ordinances or regulations that are hampering your operation, that modifications could help your business grow?
The only one that I am specifically aware of is that if you serve alcohol in a public park, it has to be a nonprofit. And so like, we were able to go to a, like, we could legally serve alcohol at Art Walk, but legally, the city says you have to be a nonprofit to serve alcohol.
So when are you going to launch Manifest Foundation?
Well, we, yeah. Question. Yeah. I know, I'm going to use chairman. But no, the city has been really, like, the city's been really, really helpful. Creating the wet zone after the Super Bowl down in the sports district is, you know, was, was genius. And so now with the new laws where we can make cocktails, people can come to Manifest, and I call it cruising crystal. Like, we put it in a plastic, clear plastic cup, and they could walk around, you know, with it. And I think if you treat adults like adults, they act like adults, and they'll self-regulate if someone's being a problem.
But to further answer what you said, is there are city ordinances that obviously overlay on this. So for example, in, in Jacksonville Beach, which Hannah can speak very succinctly to, they have an ordinance where you cannot serve any spirits or cocktails in any kind of a public foundation. So at their amphitheater, if there's a festival or music concert, no spirit-based beverages can be sold. And that's just a city ordinance. So even though I have the ability to sell at a, it's going to be trumped by whatever, you know? So we're licensed for where we are. You know, any of the other distilleries in the city, it's what's your zoning, what's your uses, you know, that kind of thing.
And Hannah is with Ferg Creative, and we're one of her clients.
And so, and so, and so, and so. She's putting on a festival out at the beach, is actually why I'm where in the midst of that.
But yeah, but like, there's so many levels of laws that you just have to make sure, like, I don't know whether you want to start at the top and go down, or at the bottom and go up, but it's definitely, there's so many different layers. It's like a Gantt chart, you know? It's like, you know, what, what can we do? Well, we can do all of this, but not here. We can do everything there.
Let me ask, do you think, do you think that more distilleries are going to, you know, I say pop-up, I realize being in stories on a pop-up type thing. It's not like you just open a bar. And you suddenly have all this alcohol that you've produced. It takes time and all that. Do you think, especially with the growth of downtown sports entertainment zone, here within just where we're sitting right now, there's slated to be nine new restaurants and a couple of other, you know, fun things in the works? Like, what does this mean for them? What is like, do you think that we're going to have a sudden surge of people wanting to open distilleries? I mean, how does that? And then for the to-go, well, and the restaurants in general, what do you think that's going to do?
Well, I know from the, from the distillery angle, the, the state of Florida, when the law was passed, right before the law was passed, did an economic impact study, which anytime there's a tax-related law, they have to do that just to record kind of existing tax base and then potential changes after that. And then I'm not going to state whether or not this is true, but the, the result of the impact study was that they would see very minimal change from a licensing standpoint. So their forecast is that they wouldn't see a noticeable change in an increase, but obviously from a state excise tax standpoint, so we pay, we pay federal excise on everything that goes out to our distributors. Anything that moves to my, to my tasting room is state excise. So they did know that there would be an increase in state excise, just because the ability to sell cocktails increases that volume. You know, my personal opinion, I feel like there will be some, but like you mentioned, the barrier of entry is so much higher. I know that on the restaurant side, I mean.
Right. And we also obviously collect sales taxes. Like, explaining excise tax to normal people is like, what? They don't understand that. But people really understand, I think, sales tax. And how I explain it is, up until July 1st, you'd come into Manifest, you'd pay $6, and I'd give you a mixer and a free shot, and we'd collect sales tax on that $6. Now I can sell a cocktail for $9, and now we collect 30% of whatever the math is more sales tax. And then we can, you know, now sell multiple bottles to someone. Like, you can come in if, if you wanted to do a barrel selection for your company, which is between 100 and 200 bottles. Before, we couldn't do that, but now we can do that. And so we're just, I really think a lot of this came from people thinking, hmm, we just had a pandemic.[1732.82] hmm, we just had a pandemic, how, how can we generate more revenue? A little revenue for the state and this, you know, went through.
We got a question.
Okay, so you mentioned the mix that was similar to tequila, but not under the same name. Are you gonna be able at some point to do the same thing with a mix similar to Scotch, but not under the same name?
Well, we did.
Well, we did.
What David was also lobbying through the Spirits Guild is we wanna define American single malt. And Scotch is, single malt Scotch is a legally defined term. So we're trying to do that. And what that means is it's all made from malt, all in one distillery. Blended Scotch, you could blend from anywhere, you know? And we did that, I like to say last year, but last year didn't happen. But like three years ago, we released Manifest Whiskey Project Number Two, which was an American single malt. And what we did with that is we bought four batches of Underdark Stout from our neighbor Intuition and distilled that and then aged that at the distillery. And there are peated malts in there, there's toasted, there's full malts. There's all these different terms that would take two hours and would boil you to death in what they are. But when you drink that, it has the smokiness and the peatiness of a Scotch. But much like Irish whiskey, where does it come from? Scotch is, Scotchland is made in Scotland and all that. And so there are different styles that we can make. We can't call them that. But, you know, we wanna make our own also.
Okay, so the burning question that everybody wants to know is which Saturday are you setting up the Bloody Mary Bar at the Ram? When does that start? Cause that's what I heard.
Yeah, that's interesting with that and that goes back to.
Did everyone hear the question? Okay, so the question was, when, when is Manifest setting up a Bloody Mary Bar at Ram? Now that they can legally sell spirits at Ram?
And from what I can tell from talking with RAP and Ram is that their contract with the city would not allow that. And so now that we can do it, they're looking at how can they modify their contract with the city to allow this?
To allow a vendor to come in and sell.
Right. Right now, they have on the first Saturday, I think it is, where they, they do beer there. And so when they have that license, that allows them to do anything alcoholic. But once again, the city contract overlays that. And I would imagine the city being very pro business, they would like to see that change. But we, you know, little baby steps, you know? But you can come down to the distillery every Saturday and have a Bloody Mary.
Would you have a question from, from Zoom? Jackie Smith would.
Hi Jackie.
Like to know, how do you regulate the alcohol content? I would assume the proof or percentage? And how is that legislated by the state?
So that's not really a state level, it's a federal level thing. So, and the reason is because we pay taxes based on, so it's, it's not just a liquid calculation. It's defined as what's called a proof gallon. So a proof gallon is one liquid gallon at 100 proof. So everything we make gets standardized. So if it's an 80 proof vodka, 100 proof whiskey, or 120 proof single barrel, all that gets standardized out to X amount of gallon, X amount of proof gallons. So what we report to the federal level is, hey, we've made, you know, 575 proof gallons this month and that's what we pay our, our excise tax on. And then in terms of, from a compliance standpoint of what goes in the bottle, again, that's, that's federal. So we use density meters and that's one of the reasons we, we put batch numbers on everything. So it's traceable back to the runs and I have the, you know, the receipts for it. But the, the federal government, from a compliance standpoint, can go into a liquor store, pull a bottle off a shelf, test it. And there's a certain, you have a, you have a really narrow margin of error that you're allowed. If it's, if it's over or under, then you get, you get contacted.
What I think is amazing about the government is we report taxes and gallons, but we have to put them in metric bottles.
Yeah. We're gonna start it on that whole side of things. We're also, we're technically a food product, right? It's something you ingest, yet our regulatory oversight comes from a taxation authority. Like the FDA has not, I mean, we were registered with the FDA, but the FDA has no oversight on what we do. So that's why, you know, it's terrifying to me and I try to impress upon people, know what you're doing, because there's a lot of things that can go into spirits that do not have to be disclosed on a bottle.
All right. One of the fun things that we talk about when we're doing tastings is you can put two and a half percent sugar in vodka and not mention it. If you put 3%, you have to mention it, but like two and a half percent is okay. And that's in some guidance book somewhere, like, you know, in hundreds of thousands of pages of regulations, right?
Adam, you have a question?
I, I do not have a question. I just wanted to say, I've known Jim, I think, almost 20 years now. I've known David, close to 40 years. I've watched Manifest grow. I'm, I'm from Jacksonville, I'm a big believer in downtown. I'm a big champion of these guys. I think they're doing amazing work. They've been very good charitable partners. I'm involved with the Young Lawyer section. Jim has donated his time and his product. They're very good partners of the Chamber. When I was with Impact Jaxx, we did a tour. Like if y'all have professional groups, get with Jim and have him do a tour of how they make their whiskey and their distillery. It's, it's really cool. It's a great event. And so I really just wanna celebrate them. I, I think they're doing great things for Jacksonville. I really appreciate them coming out. And I will say, I, I don't know if Rum actually goes into it, but they partnered with some, some other local guys, the Blue Owls. They made this drink called a Saturn I've never heard of. They bottled it. I, I, I'm, this is not a paid testimonial.
We might hold our own home now.
Well, they do a testimony. I was, I was like, this is literally the best drink I've ever had in my life. So I just wanted, you know, I'm very thankful for them, for Jacksonville. Yeah. Thank you in the morning, I tell you, I wish I was. I just wanna say, I'm, I'm really proud to be their friends. I'm very glad that they can come join us for Downtown Council. And I just wanna say, to the extent y'all can support them, I think they're gonna be a real key piece of the development of the east side of downtown. They're very dedicated to Jacksonville and I just, I think they're great guys and, and a great, you know, business for our, our community.
Thanks, Adam. What's up Frank? Tell you later.
Jim, you mentioned earlier the wet zone. Can you explain the parameters of it and what's involved with it? And should it be expanded throughout Duval County?
That'd be great. Yes, to the end. It, it came out of an interesting court case in that after the, after the Super Bowl, the JSO had arrested some people for drinking in a park. And they said, well, we just had the Super Bowl and we were drinking everywhere. You know, I had the amazing, well, I, I would say dubious honor of after the Super Bowl hosting the Maxim magazine after party. And it was basically, you're in a room of people that you knew, but had never met before. You know, that type of thing. Like one flash in the pan celebrity liked my tank top that I was wearing at the bar. And so there's pictures of us swapping clothes. But what happened with that is the city said, well, I guess we can't arrest homeless people for drinking in a park if we allow everybody to walk around with a drink during a Super Bowl. And so they created this wet zone around the stadium district. And like any good law, if you go to the city where they have the text of all the bills, it's like from this corner, 50 feet this way, walk down to that corner. It's on both sides there and it's like this, like, you know, little Venn diagrams, you know, that. It encompasses it. And what it means is if there's any event at any of the city owned venues, whether it's the baseball stadium, the Jaguars, TIAA Bank, or Five Star Veterans Memorial Arena, you can have people walking around with beverages if it's in plastic. You can't take a beverage from one bar and walk into another, but you can walk to the stadium. That's how tailgating is allowed. And that's also, hey, if you can go and tailgate in, in a park, why can't I drink in a park? So they just basically made it around the areas down there. Making it all Duval, why did I know that at one point, some three letter acronym downtown organization wanted to have it during art walks and all that? So like you could walk around.
You know, it's DVI.
And I, I, I like make it kind of like New Orleans, like where, once again, it's cruising crystal. You go, there's a door and there's a bus pan and there's a stack of cups. And so you take your glass, you pour it into a plastic cup, you put it in the bus pan and you walk out the door. It self-regulates. I'm not saying we wanna be Bourbon Street, but I certainly would love to have downtown where you could do a pub crawl, for example. Right, so, but, you know, baby steps, you know?
Well, and as downtown's growing, I think, you know, there are so many restaurants slated to open, especially, and I, and I always go back to that. I've got three restaurants literally in the block that we're sitting in. It's important to me that this law also changes because the idea that someone could, cause I mean, and for those of you who know, like, we do a hard stop at midnight because we wanna push people to go back out to the bars. We, we're not a silo, like, we wanna promote as many other places downtown. How great would it be? Cause someone's like, oh, I need to finish my drink. No, man, put it in the cup, you can go. Like you can walk down to the next bar, you have a drink to take along the way. Not promoting like people being trashed, as Jim is saying, we don't wanna be Bourbon Street. But, I mean, it just, to be a big city, right? We gotta have some big city things that not everyone necessarily agrees with. But I think that, I think we're all adults, some are not, and we can regulate that.
And I was asked earlier whether or not this law will make people wanna open a distillery downtown.
Yes.
And I would love to see that. What I would say is you are gonna spend quarter million dollars on equipment and then wait two years for your whiskey to be available, you know?
Right.
People would, like, you can make vodka in a week, but then all you could bake is vodka drinks. Now, I'm not saying that that's bad. I'm just saying it's probably not tenable. And you're gonna need space to do it because you're gonna have to, everything has to be made contiguous with your space, so.
Well, would it be possible for, say, an established distillery to come in and open up a secondary location here because they kinda already have product?
But they, they, do we have.
Define established.
I'd say, yeah, what, right. So, you know, like a St. Augustine Distillery or?
If you guys were opening up a second location in another city, you already have the, the ability to still.
Right.
You could take, and then while you're still on site, you could maybe, you can't do that?
No, everything that you sell has to be made in a distillery contiguous with the bar that it's served.
So let's say we opened in Orlando, a location, and it gets a little gray, but whatever you saw has to be produced, how you define produced is, is not really clarified.
And it already had product in it?
Right, and then am I, am I blending it there? And then that covers it as producing? Or does it actually have to be distilled on site? And that goes back to that rulemaking piece of it. And, and some of this is put in place too, as a protection measure, which I agree with, to prevent somebody like Maker's Mark coming in and opening, you know?
Yeah, I was thinking.
Right, right. And that's like the three tier thing too. And the, the three tier thing, and, and I think will be challenged in the next 10 years. But really it's to prevent someone like Costco from opening a distillery. Right? Because, you know, there's, there, that, you, that's why there's the separations of industries.
Right. And it's put in the law that to be defined as a craft distillery, you have to make a certain number of gallons or less. It was 75,000, now it's 250 or 200,000 gallons. But no one can own a craft distillery if they also have an interest in a larger facility. So for example, if Bacardi said, hey, we want to do something with you and all of a sudden they're part of our ownership structure, then we can no longer be called a craft distillery. And that's actually codified in it.
Right, all these rules now are part of a license, called a craft distillery license. And that license is, there's a threshold on it to prevent someone like Bacardi, who's right, right up the road on the north side, to, to open a tasting room, for example.
And just to, we've been up there a couple of times. They have a really cool, like, distillery lab up there. And last time I was up there, we were chatting. And they have on site between three and a half and five million gallons of rum. That's their par level. That's how much they just have there. So that if a boat can't get here from Puerto Rico with rum, they have enough. And they have three or four bottling lines, one of which is just the airline bottles. And airline bottles, 50 ml or one and three quarter ounces. And they fill 6,000 gallons a day into airline bottles. And.
Oh, it's just, it's, that's not only Bacardi, it's Bombay Sapphire, it's, what's the other one? There's a third, not a gin, but this is multiple brands that are under their portfolio now. Is it impressive operation?
No, it's, it, I wish they gave tours to people.
Yeah.
He's really private. But the point being is they fill up 6,000 gallons into one and three quarter ounce bottles every day. Pre-pandemic.
Right, and that doesn't include their, their 1.75 liter bottles and like, it's.
And so we make a couple thousand, like, last year, we made 5,000 gallons more alcohol than we did previous year because that was hand sanitizer. But so in one day, they fill up more than we made in an entire year of hand sanitizer and other products.
Right.
You know? So, yeah. We're approaching a million dollars and so like, we're happy.
Well, okay, so this is Frank's gonna be the last question because we're at 8:52 and even though we're in person, we're still having to be mindful of time, especially for those on Zoom. So Frank, you're gonna go with the last question.
It was interesting to learn that we're one of the top three states as far as consumption of spirits. What, what spirit is the most popular? I mean, is it frozen margaritas? Is it rum? Is it?
It's still vodka. So vodka is the number one spirit in the United States, no longer worldwide, but it is still the number one consumed spirit in the US. Whiskey is a, is second, but it's a pretty big gap between that.
Yep, and then RTDs are approaching nationwide, same as wine right now.
Yeah, the RTD, which is a canned cocktails, is second to all that kind of stuff.
That's interesting. Yes, Adam, you can also ask one more question.
Actually, question, your, your comment about Bacardi made me wonder. Are, are you guys ever looking at doing minis to cost you prohibited?
They do minis, honey.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
He's the biggest advocate of the big牌子, clearly.
Yeah, I've never seen them. They don't have them at, oh, yeah.
We do have them at home. But then she, you don't know, that's my husband. Okay, all that to be said, all to be said. Well, and, and to Adam's point, like, I would say, like, you guys need to go to Manifest if you haven't been, right? And now you can go and have a full cocktail. And you don't have to wait for us to like throw a private event there to be able to have drinks on site. I just thank you guys from the bottom of my heart, of the council's heart, the Chamber's heart, of everyone, like the city, for everything that you do. Adam said it best, like, y'all have really been a huge driving force for so many organizations, the community in general, like, they sponsor like the 5K rundown, like, there's a, the move, I don't even say it correctly.
We do it.
Thank you. And just a whole bunch of other things, but like, they were part of the champions that started that. So I just, so thank you guys for everything.
Thank you guys.
And so we're here.
Yeah, stick Manifest.
We'll see you tonight.